Okay, good morning. I'd like to, it's March 3rd, Thursday. This committee is very excited about being in the Valley. We have a quorum. I'm joined by Mr. Harris Dawson and we anticipate that Mr. Weezer will be here shortly. Madam Clerk, or Mr. Clerk, I am so sorry. I looked and saw somebody else, okay? Why don't you read what's on today's agenda and we'll get started?
Certainly, sir. What we have today is an item that was continued from February 19, 2016. We have comments from the public relative to motion Fuentes, Westen, O'Farrell, and a proposed ballot measure to amend the Los Angeles City Charter and Administrative Code to restructure the governance of the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power.
I think what we can do, we have some public comment, so I think I'll start out with that. We'll do a minute each. But I just want to say that there's going to be several hearings on this issue. They'll be at different times of the day and different locations. We're committed to a minimum of three large community meetings that will be co-hosted by the neighborhood councils and the neighborhood alliances. So I don't want anyone to think that some official action is going to be taken today. Our goal is to have a proposal to present to our colleagues on the council sometime in June. So with that said, why don't I start off with the, like I said, general public comment at a minute. Leonard Horowitz, please come forward. Then I have a card with no name on it. I think it's someone from SCLC. Yes, sir, go right ahead.
Hello, how are you?
Good.
My name is Leonard Horowitz. I'm a stakeholder, holder from West Hills and Van Nuys. I'm a member of the DWP Oversight Committee and Advocacy Committee. And the DWP Oversight Committee recommends that there be a robust and transparent discussion and debate before any measure is placed on the ballot for voter approval or rejection. To date, we have seen nothing. I am not in favor of any ballot measure as long as there is a mention of capping the 8% illegal transfer of ratepayers' electrical funds. Ballot approval would lock in the transfer funds for non-DWP purposes. The funds are going towards fire and police, which we all know we need, but if the mayor and the city council would do their fiduciary responsibilities and have a proper budget...
Thank you. Thank you, but you're speaking for yourself, right? Okay.
But I'm also speaking for our committee...
So the committee voted and they authorized you to come and say all of that? Because I was with some committee members last night and they didn't tell me that.
Okay, as a committee member, I'm mentioning it, so we are transparent.
All right. Okay, so, yes, sir. Oh, Reverend Smart, your name's not on here.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, don't be.
Mr. Chairman, and good to see you, Mr. Harris Dawson. I stand as president and CEO of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference of Southern California, and we believe fundamentally in the merit-based civil service system. So we are against restructuring of the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power in part by eliminating its civil service protection. We believe that civil service protection is a bedrock of American employee system, particularly within governments. It's democratic, it's justice, it allows people to make sure they can move throughout the system, and it would be a travesty of justice, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Dawson, if this was allowed to move forward. So thank you very much, and I give the rest of my five seconds to someone else.
Okay, well, you know what, I'm gonna take your five seconds.
Civil Service mandate, which is a constitutional protection in the law. And finally, individual employees have certain vested property rights in civil service protections.
Thank you. So if I could have Ms. Hayes Walker, Hans Russo, and Gavin. Gavin Kuhn, come on up. Yes, good morning.
Good morning. Carmen Hayes Walker, ASME Local 3090. We represent the clerical and administrative support workers who serve the citizens of Los Angeles. Removing DWP from civil service is not only a bad idea, it's just wrong. You're literally cutting off career opportunities for workers on both sides of the spectrum. Local 3090 represents classifications of entry-level workers, and they don't use the same, and they use the same classifications for their start of careers at the DWP. They don't necessarily stay at DWP, they move their careers, as they move their careers through civil service. For example, workers who start on the career path through clerk typist and senior and so on, and move on to management analyst series. Most people who start on the career, they don't stay in the one department. The opportunities for advancement include all city departments. It seems as though you're literally putting holes in careers of dedicated workers and the protections that have been promised them and just swept away. We urge you not to remove civil service in your decision.
Thank you. So now, again, Hans, Gavin, and Teresa Sanchez.
Good morning, members. Good morning, members of the council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on this matter. I am a city employee. I am with IOUE Local 501. A problem with this happening, if civil services cut off, members of the city staff that are employed will not be able to move from one department to the other. This takes away a major opportunity for the employees, and also, as you get older, it creates a hurdle that a lot of employees will not be able to elevate themselves over that hurdle, or jump it, I should say. And that problem is that your time, your seniority, does not transfer over to each department. This is going to get more and more difficult, and what it's also doing is it's dividing the employment lines and it's keeping one side isolated from the other. I do not believe that this is a benefit to the city or any of the city employees or the public. Thank you.
Thank you. So if we can have Gavin, Teresa, and Fred from DWP. Fred, I can't quite make out the last name. So, okay, so yeah, hey Gavin.
Good morning. I gotta talk fast if I made myself in.
No, just go ahead, man.
Good morning, Mr. Westen, and Mr. Harris Dawson, good morning. I briefly want to address that there is an actual impact by the removal of civil services beyond the conceptual piece, there's an actual physical impact to the workforce. For example, we have apprenticeship programs that we're looking forward to put together. We've got it in our new MOU that'll benefit the city with training that's also involved with that. These things will be missed in the process if you have no civil services, no continuity, the ability for this workforce to move back and forth. There's also an issue that we have succession planning issues, as you know, we have a large chunk of our workforce will be retiring very shortly, in the next five years. Civil Services is working on with us, and my following speaker will address it. These kind of things are very crucial, and you're going to close a lot of doors and abilities to take care of issues going forward. I seriously request that you take a serious look at removing it. Thank you.
Okay, and Gavin, and let me just say this to everyone that's going to come up and speak. Yeah, we want to try to stay within a minute, but there's no, I don't have an ejector button. So when your 60 seconds is gone, now go push a button and you fly out through the ceiling. So take your time and finish your thoughts.
Okay, because the real issue on succession is huge across the city, and if you eliminate the civil service component, it's going to have a, I believe, we believe...
I got it.
...a dramatic effect that the ability to address that problem, because you've now quartered the workforce out and all the stuff that goes in.
I got you, Gavin.
That's my main point I want to get across.
All right.
Thank you.
Come on, Teresa. And then we'll get Fred and Bennett Kaiser will follow. Hi.
Good morning, council members. Teresa Sanchez from ASME. I just wanted to point out that if there's a problem with hiring and recruitment and training and moving folks up the ladder at DWP, let's solve that problem in the way that we've approached it through the Coalition of City Unions contract. We have an agreement to hire 5,000 city workers in the next couple of years, and we're doing that in an innovative way with a view to modernize civil service and make it more efficient and responsive to city departments. We're going to do that by partnering with community organizations and training partners, as well as doing targeted local hiring in communities all around the city of Los Angeles. The Department of Water and Power can do exactly the same thing by reaching out and working with the Personnel Department, the city's policymaking advisors, and you, the city council, and the mayor's office to address that issue of hiring the future city workforce. And we can also, we'd be happy to partner with you and them in order to advise and see if we can contribute to that process.
Thank you. Okay, so let's get again Fred, Bennett Kaiser, Charlie, Charlie Memes. Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Fred Nohado. I'm a security officer for Department of Water and Power, also part of the joint labor management team. I'm here to hopefully discourage you from changing DWP and getting rid of civil service for the following reasons. To my coworkers and I, this would be the equivalent of getting more contractors in, and we believe that the contractors that would be coming in would not be as, first off, won't be trained, because the department is going to realize that they don't know how long their commitment is going to be, so the training will be lacking. You also won't have the commitment, you won't have the investment, you won't have the loyalty from civil service workers. And at one point, we were working toward an Assembly Bill 1980 to become public officers, which entails stringent background checks, and I don't know if the city is going to be able to do that, if you're not able to use the multi-agencies of the LAPD, the Sheriff's Department, all the civil service agencies that would help in that background check.
Okay, thanks for coming out.
And we're protecting your water and your power, and we're proud to do it.
Thank you, and we're proud of you. So if I could get Mr. Kaiser, Charlie Memes, Joanne D'Antonio? Yes?
Good morning, committee members. My name is Bennett Kaiser. I was a, I represented the 13th City Council District on the elected Los Angeles City Charter Commission. One of the things that we looked at very seriously at the time we reviewed the charter and brought the new city charter to the voters was civil service and employment. There was a, an effort by then-mayor Riordan to remove civil service protection from many people within the city, many groups of people. And having a lot of input from representatives from Mayor Riordan's office and side of this, and from the labor side of this, it was very apparent that civil service was a benefit to the city, and the Charter Commission elected to retain the original language and not, and not take away the protections that were there. Thank you very much, it's good to talk to you.
Thank you. So if I could get Charlie, Joanne, James Johnson, Mr. Memes?
Good morning, President Westen. Charlie Memes, I was appointed to the other Charter Commission by John Ferraro, and we also looked closely at civil service and the history of it. It was instituted in 1883 to get out of a patronage system that had led to graft and corruption and to the employment of federal workers that didn't have the qualifications to do the work. Civil service is basically a merit system, so people have to have the ability to do the job and demonstrate that through examination, both for initial hiring and promotion. But I wanted to mention a little bit about this concept of the billing system and Water and Power needing to get new employees in a hurry to answer the calls coming in. If they'd done what we did when I was on the Retirement Commission and we put in a new data system, we ran the new system and the old system in parallel for months and months until we cross-checked the data and found out that everything was matching. There were some initial problems with that data, because there were glitches in the new system, but we fixed that by running them in parallel. This is not a, an employment problem, this is a management problem.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna, in like five minutes, if anybody wants to speak and you haven't filled out a card, please do so, because in five minutes I'll, I won't accept any other cards, because I want to get to the conversation. But welcome, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm Joanne D'Antonio. I'm a stakeholder from Valley Glen. I'm also, just for disclosure, serve on the DWP Advocacy and Oversight Committees as a representative of my neighborhood council, and I'm on the Government Relations Committee of that council. This file, council file, is still in process, because we haven't had enough time to get it through our board. But my personal feeling is that we don't need another layer of bureaucracy with a paid commission. We get much detail from the ratepayer advocates and from various people from the DWP, including the CEO and further down the food chain there. And we listen to what they have to say, we investigate, and because the DWP is a hot bed issue, I don't think putting it on the ballot will create informed discussion, it'll just stir up anti-labor issues that come up in the general public, because people feel they pay too much, but I don't think that's really the case. Thank you.
Thank you. So James Johnson, Walker Foley, Colleen Pick? Brother James?
Brother Westen, James Johnson, SEIU Local 721. We're proud to represent the security officers at the Department of Water and Power. So, I'm puzzled, because frankly, the most that many of us have read about this issue has been in the LA Times. We welcome the presentation that'll take place today, but while we should be focused, frankly, on the November general election and figuring out how we're going to save this country, if nothing changes in terms of the final product of this governance reform ballot proposal and civil service remains a problem from the perspective of those that are advocating for its deletion from city, whether it be DWP, DWP is part of the city. We can't support it, won't support it, and will be focused exclusively on dealing with this ballot initiative versus figuring out how we send our members and staff to battleground states to try to save this country. I don't know if folks heard this morning, the 2012 presidential nominee for the Republicans, but we're in a real crisis, and while there needs to be some reforms related to how things get done in DWP, using a meat cleaver where a scalpel seems to us to be necessary is the way to go, but we can't support it, won't support it, and do all we can to oppose it if civil service is deleted from the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so Ms., do I have a Walker Foley, well, Ms. Pick? Come on. Walker Foley, Charles Harnell, and is it Dr. Molly Rhodes? Good morning. Identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Colleen Pick. I actually am on the Neighborhood, Northridge West Neighborhood Council.
Good.
But I'm coming here to speak for myself.
Go ahead.
And I'm a small business owner, and I've never done this before, the son was scared, but I really don't feel that we need more. We're getting more bureaucracy, we're getting more everything. You guys speak of transparency, but I never see it. I've gone to so many meetings on the Department of Water and Power, and I was saddened to find out that the choice was already made, that the rates were going up, but this is a different issue. I don't feel you're working for me. I'm a small business owner. I have had to cut, 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 and to stay alive, all I see is asking for more. You can't make it on what you have, you ask me for more. That's wrong. No job should be guaranteed.
Thank you. Okay, so Mr. Foley, Charles Harnell, Dr. Rhodes, yes?
Hey there, Walker Foley, Southern California Organizer for Food and Water Watch. I want to say that we support our brothers and sisters in the labor movement here representing today to protect their rights, and I want to say that any time a politician says that we need less politics in the process, what that really means is we're trying to remove ballot box accountability from governance. On behalf of Food and Water Watch and our members in Los Angeles, we are urging you to oppose this motion from Councilmember Fuentes that would undermine democratic governance and public oversight over the LADWP. This motion would make LADWP less accountable, would undermine efforts to improve the ways in which LADWP sources both its water and power. And it would do this by removing city council oversight of rate increases, contracts, bulk water sales, and it would facilitate the abuse of LADWP customers by unjustified rate hikes. And it could also further entrench the policies that must be reformed, such as the utility's dangerous dependence on imported natural gas and imported water, which come at great expense to LADWP customers and the environment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. So, please come forward and identify yourself.
Good morning, sir. My name is Charles Sorrell. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. I'm coming as a concerned citizen. I'm a minister in this community, I'm a chaplain in this community, I am a servant in this community as a traffic officer, but they gave me talking points, technical talking points, to be able to portray, but I want to give you from my heart. My dad, aunt, and three uncles retired from the Department of Water and Power. My father raised seven kids on the Department of Water and Power salary, so it's very important to me to keep the, to keep the DWP in the city, in the family, and keep it for officers like myself to be able to promote out to. So thank you very much for your time.
No, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, I'm Dr. Molly Rhodes. I'm a research and policy analyst for SEIU 721, and I just wanted a wonk footnote. The Navigant Study said it talked to the unions, but it didn't talk to SEIU 721, which is really unfortunate, because our security guards know a whole hell of a lot. There were issues that were identified in the study that we agree with, which include security needs a line item in the budget, so it's not subordinate to other things, because what's more important than keeping the plant safe? Thank you.
Okay, that, I have no more public comment cards, so that concludes general public comment. I want to thank each and every one of you for adjusting your calendar to be with us and to give us your point of view on the subject. Again, let me reiterate that this is the beginning of a process, not the end, that we are committed to have several hearings. A lot of questions are going to be asked, not just by you, but by us. We will request reports and data, but just, you know, I want to just make everybody understand that this is the beginning of a conversation, that I do believe that the residents of this city want us to have, so this conversation will take place. So, at this point, what I think we will do is I'd like to invite Mr. Fuentes to the center table, let him give us his thoughts, and then we'll bring up the CLA and other staff, CLA and CAO and other staff, because there'll be a series of questions from us, and I know I have some, some reports that I would like to get back. Mr. Fuentes, the floor is yours, sir.
President Westen and colleagues for coming to the San Fernando Valley to have this very important conversation with our residents. I have submitted a letter to the committee members outlining the thoughts that we have on this proposal, at least as it relates to these items that are being discussed today in more detail, but I'd like to briefly discuss two components of the motion. First, authorizing the board to hire independent budget, policy, and legal staff. The board, as you know, for most, for the most part, has to rely on the Department of Water and Power for information and analysis of its own proposals. Board members don't have the benefit that we currently enjoy, where we have a office like the chief administrative officer or the legislative analyst who can provide independent analysis. When DWP management asks the board to approve a contract or policy change, the board has to take the utility's word that it is in the best interest of the ratepayer. They have very little additional analysis to help them form a decision. Although the ratepayer advocate, I think, was a tremendous and very good decision for voters to add to our charter, they don't have the requisite staff in order to do the analysis that I think that is necessary to vet major issues and their small-size limits how much they can realistically do. That is why I proposed in the motion that we authorize the board to hire its own staff who can vet DWP proposals and help the board make informed decisions. I've also proposed that the board should be authorized to hire its own legal staff. The board is currently represented by the city attorney, and I think inherently it puts the city attorney into odds with itself. On the one hand, when it's serving the board, it has to represent the ratepayers. On the other hand, when it's got issues before the city council, it has to represent the city hall and its treasury. I don't think it serves the city attorney and certainly either client very well when it's in that situation. So it begs the question, who does a city attorney represent? The interests of the city or the interests of the utility and the ratepayer? I believe that this issue can be addressed by enabling the board to select its own legal team. The second issue I would like to address is hiring at the Department of Water and Power. The utility currently hires through the Personnel Department. The utility cannot hire quickly and respond to its changing needs. The best example, and most recent one, was the highly-publicized billing fiasco rollout in 2013. When ratepayers called to complain to the department about their bills, its customer servers representatives were overwhelmed and could not handle the large call volume. Because of the cumbersome hiring process, because... Because of the cumbersome hiring process, because 10,000 employees at the utility have to rely on civil service codes that address 45,000 citywide employees, it takes much more time than is probably necessary, certainly necessary, to hire and bring people on board. But I think it begs a larger question when you think about what the rate payer is getting. The rate payer is mailing his or her bill into the city Department of Water and Power rate base. They are paying for a service. That service effectively is contracted out to the City of Los Angeles' Personnel Department. That department is highly dependent on the treasury and the health of the economy in the City of Los Angeles. So think of the Great Recession that we recently suffered from. We made cuts in every single department. It's impossible for a department who receives its bills paid by the rate payer to get its commensurate service delivery from the City of Los Angeles. They just, it never matches up. So in effect, what you have is rate payers paying their bill, paying full freight, but not getting the same service delivery back. This problem could be mitigated if the department had more flexibility over its hiring. These hiring challenges were recently highlighted by the Navigant Consulting Report, both in the rate cases as well as the independent economic analysis that was recently done by the Controller's Office. Navigant, the consultant, reported that the department has had difficulty bringing on many issues, but the one that really seemed to grab a tremendous amount of attention is its ability to adequately provide security over some of the more vulnerable assets in the utility. We cannot continue to put the utility's security at risks because we can't get the best people on board. And we certainly shouldn't have to rely on a system that tries to address 45,000 employees where the core functions that we're talking about is in a universe of only 10,000 at the utility. These personnel challenges are only expected to get worse. A significant number of DWP employees are eligible to retire in the coming years. The last report was that it was about 33% of the workforce. 10 years ago, Council President, when you came onboard, in 2007, it was reported that it was 40% the attrition. So as you can see, we're not making any more headway in this vulnerability in terms of the knowledge transfer, and it's largely, I think, a problem because we can't fill those critical positions quickly, and we can't maintain the reliability of a system as important as a utility if we don't change our behavior. In my motion, I have proposed that we give the DWP oversight of its own hiring functions and eliminate the need for the utility to follow civil service hiring rules at the utility. I understand that this particular part of the proposal is not without controversy. I want to make it clear that this isn't an attack on civil service. I think it's an absolutely critical service that we have to have on the city side of things, but we have to bifurcate the ledger between the utility and the City of Los Angeles. The civil service statutes that we have in place haven't served us as well as they should. As much as we argue about the protections that it should give its employees, think of the fire department and its challenges in hiring people. Even with the civil service rules in place, we still don't get the diversity and gender balance that we're trying to accommodate, and we have civil service protections there. So what I'm suggesting here is that we make the utility more nimble, that we make it so that it's more flexible in its hiring prices, processes, and that we make it more efficient and responsive. I think only that way, colleagues, will we be able to realize the real value that owning your own utility brings to the residents of the City of Los Angeles. The balance that we've got to strike is a difficult one. You've got people that we're responsible to that are residents of the City of Los Angeles, but you also have rate payers who are paying for a service, and we've got to figure out how it is that we deliver on that promise. I think that maintaining the current system doesn't fare well for us, and it certainly isn't nimble and fast enough to respond to the future needs of this city. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions, but more eager to hear additional comments and presentations from staff so that we can figure out a solution, if at all possible, to address these, I think, very critical concerns.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Fuentes at this point? Okay, if there may be a question later, I don't know your calendar, but what we're going to do now is bring up staff, and I know I do have a series of questions for them. In fact, is there another chair there, Mr. Fuentes? You may, if you want to sit there for a couple of minutes. Because now, before Mr. Santana and Ms. So, before we get into, you know, your presentations, I do want to just quickly ask a couple of questions. You know, when we met before, I did think that the Navigant presentation was a strong presentation. And this word nimble that Mr. Fuentes uses today was used a lot when we had that conversation. And another thing that really struck me during the last meeting was the need for a level of staff that would, it's similar to what we have here. Your office, Mr. CAO and Ms. CLA makes recommendation, but we still have a level of staff of our own that can question you and make suggestions and recommendations. And I don't know if that exists at the Department of Water and Power. So, I see, I believe there's a need for that. Somebody's going to have to convince me that there's not a need for that level of staff. So, I would like, if you don't already have it, a report back that kind of details what that could look like, what the number of staff members to begin would be, best way for us to begin to factor something like that in. And so with that said, though, and then we'll go into, I have a couple of other questions. Did you, Mr. Fuentes, have thoughts on how that, for lack of a better word, and if I am not identifying it correctly, I'll call it a support staff? Did you have any idea as to how that would be put in place? You know, that they work directly for the commissioners or directors or whatever we Can you share?
Sure. So, I mean, I think there's a couple of different ways that you can sort of slice it. I mean, so we benefit tremendously from having, obviously, the legislative analysts working on behalf of the council, but that's tempered with the CAO's office role in the city. It works both for the executive and for the legislative branch. And so what our CAO does, and I'll let Miguel speak to this because he's far more educated on this than I am, is that we have the ability to really analyze requests given to us by department staff. And that ability is really critical when you marry the requests with the actual fiscal reality of the city. And so what I'm suggesting is that we have the same time, same type of atmosphere at the utility. Maybe it's a CAO-like sort of function where they assess and work with department staff, utility staff, to come with proposals. Maybe we go a different route and have the rate payer advocate play that role, so long as we create a robust, more fortified rate payer advocate office. And it's not to disparage the rate payer advocate, but with three or four people dealing with a utility that has 10,000 employees, billions of dollars of revenue coming through it, they're just not adequately staffed and equipped to do that. Another way of doing it would potentially to have the rate payer advocate sit as an ex officio member of the board that has the benefit of reviewing things alongside with the board. I think there's many different ways to go, but I know that I enjoy a tremendous amount of flexibility and information when I have the CAO's recommendations and reports to rely on. It helps me adjust the demand with the fiscal reality of the city, and I think that's critically, a critical component that's missing at the utility.
So, Miguel, Sharon, could you weigh in? Give me your thoughts.
First, on the question that you raised about the department needing to be more nimble, as was stated in the Navigant report. I think when you look at the various reports that have been issued over the last several years, they all reference that flexibility as an issue, not in comparison to the rest of the city, but in comparison to other utilities. And I think that's the important distinction. The conversation about hiring is it's not as much a critique on the city system, but rather when you look at comparing the utility to other utilities throughout the state, their conclusions are that they have more flexibility in how they hire, when they hire, and how they develop and plan for their workforce. And so, I think that's an important sort of nuance to make in relation to reviewing those various reports. And if you start looking at alternatives, there's certainly a full range of alternatives that could be examined. You know, looking at the civil service system is one range, and there's certainly other things that could be done to still achieve the same kind of outcome, or similar kind of outcomes, and I think that's something that's worth looking at. In terms of the staffing levels, you know, as the staffing at the commission, for the commissioners, it is fairly limited. They have one board secretary, one utility executive secretary, and two senior administrative clerks. And then they also get support for communications, some business support, and IT and security. But in terms of the, sort of, the analytical, objective work that is provided by my office and by CLA, they don't have that. My office does produce reports at the direction of the mayor under one of the executive orders. When the mayor requests our office to do so, the client in this case is the mayor in that capacity, but ultimately the council, because those reports are limited to those issues that will ultimately go to you as a council to approve. So, if there's a subject that, the contract or major policy initiative that ultimately requires your analysis, the mayor directs our office to do a review of that. We submit that review to the mayor. The mayor then submits it to the commission. It's one of many things that they look at. Once they take action, then our report then gets submitted to you for your review as sort of an independent analysis. But the audience that it's designed for is for the decision-makers that we're accountable to, and that's, of course, you and the council and the mayor. But there's certainly other alternatives, and Sharon could talk about some of those others.
But, you know, so it works now, the department, let's say the department has a recommendation that they want to put before the board of commissioners. So they come up with whatever their plan is, and it's presented to the commissioners. Is there staff available to vet their recommendation? Does the commission have that staff to do that?
No, they have to rely on the department and the information and the advice given to, and the recommendation given by the department and the general manager to make their decision.
So they're kind of on their own if they have a series of questions and...
I mean, our reports are there as backup, but ultimately, their decision-making is based on the information provided to them. And our reports are only limited to those issues that will ultimately go to the council, and most issues don't.
Sharon?
Yeah, there wouldn't be like an executive director, similar to like the police commission, for example, or the Board of Public Works, where they do have additional staffing. The Board of Water and Power Commissioners pretty much rely on the department staff, and there isn't any additional staff to review and provide an alternative analysis of anything that's presented before them, with the exception of the rate payer advocate, who is available, albeit with, you know, limited staffing. Mr. Fuentes actually mentioned a few things that actually brought to mind that with regard to staffing for the board, it may not necessarily actually require a charter amendment. It's actually maybe a budgetary resource that could be provided as part of the annual budget process that's done by the board. I might be wrong about that, but that's something that we can certainly explore if it's a staffing issue. I don't think that the board is limited in terms of providing staff to support them in terms of analysis.
You bring up a good point, but I think that, you know, we're looking at reform. We're not just looking at charter reform. So as we move forward with this process, I would still, you know, that you should just indicate to us various things that we could do, and, you know, indicate that there would be no need for a charter change.
The one exception would be for a city attorney, because that actually would require a charter reform for the Board of Water and Power Commissioners to have their own legal counsel. As the city attorney is legal counsel for all city departments and boards, so that one aspect would require a charter amendment.
The question on whether it's a charter change, we would certainly examine that further. It goes to the point of who ultimately is the hiring authority. So, you know, for example, I get appointed by the mayor, I get confirmed by the council, I report to both, and that's, if there were going to be...
Yeah, but the question is, who do you like the most?
All 16, they're all my favorite. And then, in the context of the DWP, if you're going to create a CAO/CLA type of function to support the board, my guess would be that the board itself would want to be the hiring authority of that position, and they would want to feel like that person's accountable only to them. So we would have to look at the charter, if that's allowed, how we would, if that could be done without a charter amendment, or would there in fact need to be a charter amendment to allow that direct appointment from the board itself.
Did you have, you know, like some opening statements that you wanted to, or presentation? Because we can go into that. It's just that that question, those two questions have been driving me crazy for, since the last hearing. And another thing, I did have conversations with stakeholders and neighborhood council folk last night, and again, this contracting issue came up, and the lack of responses and the, I guess, the ability to turn that around quickly. So I really would like to understand more about how it actually functions and what we can do so that it could be, regardless of what happens, I think we have a responsibility to try to ensure that our DWP can compete and move and not be disadvantaged when it's in comparison to other utilities.
Well, we do have a very brief presentation, and we also...
And members, just tap me if you want to ask a question, because I still have, I still have some.
And in the room, there are representatives from the Department of Water and Power, Shannon Pasqual, and who runs the personnel function there, who certainly talked about the issue of hiring, and then Jauli Mas from Personnel, the department Personnel as well.
Who's hiding behind a computer?
Sarai, from my office, who's helping out here. So if we could go ahead with the first slide, again, this is very brief, going to the point that you asked in terms of who, what kind of support does the board itself have? Obviously, it has the general manager, the CFO, and as I stated earlier, it does receive support from a secretary, one utility executive secretary, and two senior administrative clerks. Next slide. How does the department interface or rely on the rest of the city family? That's one of the questions that we asked to look at. The controller does provide accounting assistance to the department. Obviously, it does the charter-required IEA survey of the department. The controller, the department does have its ability to run its own payroll and disburse checks for contracts, but it requires that the controller validate those disbursements. So they cannot do it independent of the controller validating any disbursements that are made. The city attorney provides all the legal support for the department. There are 38 attorneys that are assigned to the DWP, most of whom are actually housed at the DWP. So there's a huge number of attorneys that are exclusively working on providing support, but they ultimately all report to the city attorney. but they ultimately all report to the city attorney. But they have, the department does have direct access to a number of support from the city attorney's office. This is not unique. The other proprietaries generally have the same kind of support, and some of the larger departments do as well. The department is also supported by the Personnel Department. There are four positions that are exclusively dedicated for personnel function, and then it obviously receives independent advice from the Office of Public Accountability, which Sharon will walk through. As I stated earlier in response to your questions, my office and the CLA provide the mayor and council support on DWP matters. Our reports obviously available to the commissioners and the department. We often work closely with them in trying to understand the various issues. In the recent, as an example, in the recent discussion and approval, initial approval of the rate increase, the CLA and I work very closely with the general manager of the department and the ratepayer advocate on understanding the proposal, on asking questions in advance. We worked with the OPA on providing direction to the consultants, who ultimately helped inform the recommendation. It was something that was done in hand in hand, but we were doing it on behalf of the council and the mayor, the council and the mayor are our clients. My office also provides direct support on labor negotiations, the way labor negotiations are structured. The EERC provides direction on issues related generally to compensation. The Board of Public Works, Board at the DWP provides direction as it relates to benefits and healthcare. So the overall negotiations are bifurcated between the city and the board. There are a few incidents where they're combined, as they were recently done in the last agreement, because it was as a result of litigation. And of course, the CLA provides policy and legislative review. Personnel Department manages the personnel function on hiring for the department. It does so in the context of the larger civil service that we, that we're all in. And again, the EERC provides direction on salaries, and then ultimately salaries are approved through the council process. As has been stated, there have been a number of studies that have looked at the issue specifically of hiring, and again, it's important to note that the comparison that is done is generally in comparison to other utilities. It's not looking at the city family as a whole, because many, the processes are similar for the rest of the city, right? And so, but if they examine sort of who their competitors are, the various issues been raised in the RAND study, just to summarize, that the process is slow, complicated, and lengthy. The IEA study that was referenced earlier states that there's an inability to quickly respond to urgent needs. Then there was a RAND study again that states that limited ability to hire professionals with expertise in utility operations, rigid job categories, lack of succession planning. And I think if some of my colleagues from the other city departments were here, they would say, well, me too, I have the same issues. But again, it was in the context of other utilities. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sharon.
With regard to the Office of Public Accountability, this office was created in 2011 after council's last charter reform measures related to DWP. The OPA is actually described as a public independent office providing analysis of DWP rates and operations. It's headed by the ratepayer advocate, who is actually appointed by a citizens' commission and confirmed by the mayor and council. The ratepayer advocate serves a five-year term and may be removed by council by two-thirds vote. The provisions are specified in charter, and is actually similar to the removal of the chief of police. Dr. Pickel, who's here with us today, was our first ratepayer advocate, and he was appointed in February of 2012. Next slide. In the charter amendment, it specified that the duties and mission of the ratepayer advocate would be established by ordinance. Within the LA Administrative Code, the ordinance does describe the mission of the Office of Public Accountability. It also establishes the independence of the OPA essentially functioning outside of DWP management and the city. It specifies the authorities of the Office of Public Accountability, and as well as reporting obligations specifically related to the reasonableness of rate changes by DWP, as well as reporting on contracts, operations, policies, procedures of the DWP. The next slide, please. Currently, the Office of Public Accountability includes not only the ratepayer advocate, but also a water expert as well as a power expert. The OPA also currently receives legal support from city attorney, as well as administrative support from the CAO. In fact, the budget of the Office of Public Accountability is actually within the CAO's budget. The amount that is funded to the Office of Public Accountability is actually prescribed by charter. It's established as a percentage of no less than point zero two five percent of annual revenues from the sale of water and electricity. The current year budget for the Office of Public Accountability is $2.3 million, of which over half of it is dedicated for contractual services. In addition to that, there is $750,000 for additional consultant studies that is in the city budget as well. The final slide just relates to the proposed ballot schedules. Should the committee move forward with charter reform, we have the dates specified for the next state election as well as two city elections. If the council were to move forward on the November ballot, the first action that the council would need to take is to instruct the city attorney to prepare the necessary election resolutions. The deadline for that would be June 29, with a deadline of council approval by July 1. And so we are available to hear, to answer any questions. As Miguel indicated, Personnel Department is here, as well as DWP and the ratepayer advocate, and city attorney is also here.
How does the city attorney's office deal with possible conflicts now? What happens?
Harith Trevetti from the city attorney's office. We endeavor to identify any potential conflicts in our representation of DWP as early as possible in the process, and if there's a need to hire outside council, we will convene that process and hire outside council if needed. We assess the degree of the conflict and see if we need to have an outside council. You know, the city attorney has, was a question about who the client is for the city attorney. The city attorney has one client, and that is the municipal corporation of the City of Los Angeles. We serve all the constituent departments and elements of that single client by providing objective and correct advice in the same way to everyone. And if you'd like to hear more from our office's leadership, we're happy to provide more information regarding how we deal specifically with any issues regarding DWP that you'd like to hear about.
Okay. Well, you know, I think that when we meet again, if you guys can, one thing that we've committed to community folk is that we would try our best to provide them with a variety of options, to help them understand choices and things that are going on. So I'd like to see, you know, are there alternatives to taking this function from the city attorney's office? Are there ways to give more independence without? And then I want to have a report that talks about the advantages in the event that we do eliminate. All right? And also, we should be able to make requests of you that don't have to occur during the committee process in the interest of time. So I just want to make sure that I say that. I'm curious as to how the current hiring process, how does that work now with the, did you want to jump in, or somebody with the DWP? How does that work?
I would recommend inviting the DWP personnel to explain that.
Then there, then you guys are cordially invited. Let's go.
Guy Lippa, LA DWP Chief of Staff. I'm joined here by Shannon Pasqual, our Director of Human Resources. To frame the conversation, before we get into the specifics, I think, as you heard, it's important to remember that the department is looking at forty percent of its workforce being retirement eligible in the next five years. So we're looking at the process of what does it take to ramp up hiring three thousand-plus employees in a very short period of time? And how do we compete with...
I get that, guy, but what is the process right now? What do you do? What happens now?
Okay. So our hiring process at DWP basically mirrors that of the city. We use civil service eligible lists when they are available to us to make appointments. We do our own internal hiring if we don't need to use a civil service eligible list. We can consider citywide transfers from other city departments to fill our vacancies if we can find other city employees. And the one distinction that we are a little bit different than the rest of the city is that we do have a number of classifications where we have a bid process that's embedded into the respective MOUs with our labor partners. And so some of those positions require that only individuals in those specific job classifications are given consideration first for any vacancies that may occur. Now, once we've gone through that process, if there's remaining vacancies that occur, and we've gone through the seniority-based process or the non-seniority bid process, we are free to go and look at other options for filling those positions. So either a civil service list or a citywide transfer.
Yeah, has the department ever had control of its own Personnel Department?
Well, the Human Resources Division works in conjunction with the city's Personnel Department to ensure that we are doing the appropriate hiring of staff.
But was there ever a time where there was not a relationship?
Not that I'm aware of.
And when you say the Personnel Department ensures that you're doing the proper hiring, could you describe what you mean by that statement?
Sure. So when we ask the city's Personnel Department to administer a civil service examination, they do so. What comes out of that is a resulting eligible list of people who have taken the exam and are on the list ranked based on their score on the exam, okay? There are certain civil service rules in place that require all city departments, including the Department of Water and Power, to certify only those individuals based on those rules of three whole scores and based on the city's civil service rules, and that we need to make sure that we comply with those rules and how we select the individuals off that list. At this particular point in time, no city department, including DWP, has the ability to just hire anyone who's on the list. We're all restricted based on the individual scores, the number of positions we're trying to hire, and those people that are on the list that are available to us.
So you might describe it as the Personnel Department acts as a compliance officer for the hiring that you all do?
And an administrator, oftentimes.
Correct.
So one of the, an example that is a real-world example is, for example, when we had to hire on emergency appointment customer service reps to answer the phone calls when we had the recent surge in phone calls, we had the opportunity to hire these people on emergency appointment for a year, which is an option that's there, and we trained them, they got on the phones. And then when we wanted to offer full-time jobs to these folks, we actually couldn't necessarily pull the people that we had trained that were already functioning to do those jobs. We had to start the process again, ask them to take tests, see where they got on the list, pull people off the list, and there are some people that were doing the job, were on the phones, maybe didn't do a great job through that test-taking process that we then couldn't hire, and we just lost that training, we lost that time, we had to start from scratch with folks.
Just to follow with your, and you all have to pardon me because I'm new to the civil service world of doing business, but during that year's time period, it was completely within the scope of DWP management to say to a person, you're doing a good job, we think you should go take the test because we might want to hire you later? Is that something you could do, or is that totally out of bounds?
No, absolutely. We actually, we encourage everyone to take the examination because we want to be able to have the opportunity to appoint them once the list is established.
Okay. If one wanted to change the way civil service works within the department, what would you have to do?
Well, I think, you know, we've had some conversations with the Personnel Department. We've kind of identified some areas that we think they could potentially explore that could benefit everyone in the city, not just the Department of Water and Power, because understanding all civil service rules apply to every single city department. So any recommended changes that we would make to the rules that ultimately the Personnel Department and the Civil Service Commission would have to agree to affects everyone in the city. So we've had some conversations. We've kind of identified some areas that we think might be good starting points to have some conversations. Obviously, they're going to have to engage labor in this as well. But I think we're starting in that path in terms of where we can start to look for potential areas for improvement.
Okay. I would like to request that you give us some general options, just like I said to the CAO's office. You know, I don't know how one would go about making any changes, and so if you have some plans or some ideas, I would hope that the next time we meet, we could get a, your perspective on how one would begin a process like that and various alternatives. It would appear, and I could be wrong, that some of the concerns surround, are around time and the ability to move with haste in getting the various staffing that you need or what have you. So how could one expedite that time without eliminating? You know, is there a way to give the, create a entity within the department that can still move, like I said, fast, but there's still a connection to the city's personnel? You know, so these are the kinds of, this is the kind of data that is going to be necessary for you to provide to us.
Sure.
Go, let's have, go Mr. Weeza, and then Mr. Harris Dawson. And guys, just jump in.
Sure. Thank you. And that's the direction. I'd like to see some options. If we're talking about concerns, whether it's hiring, whether it's how do we quickly respond to urgent needs, or the limited ability to hire professionals with expertise in the utility, how do we fix those particular issues without throwing out all of civil service? I mean, we'd like to see what that looks like before we even, I even would like to discuss just throwing out the whole thing. Let's look at what the problems are, and how do we address those within the context of a civil service system as options? And then we'd love to have that information, Mr. Chair. That's why we're at this point, so you can see where we're going.
And we, so we would like to be able to compare that kind of data with, in the event that there was, if we were to choose to eliminate that. You know, there's no way we can even have an objective conversation unless we have this, all of this information. So we're asking for a lot.
Yeah.
I think it's important, just to, we at the department, you know, think that civil service protection is an important part of the city fabric and the department's fabric, and we're just looking at ways to make some more efficient hires to prepare for the future and to really be able to hire into the middle of the organization. So we're happy to continue to have those conversations about how to best serve the department and the city and the people of Los Angeles while protecting our employees.
Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, let me just start by thanking everyone who's presented today, the CAO/CLA, and you all, and Mr. Fuentes especially. It's, I mean, this is, I don't want us to lose sight that this is a big, giant question.
It's, I mean, this is, I don't want us to lose sight that this is a big, giant question. Civil service, as I understand the history of it, was not set up to have efficiency as one of its main outcomes. Just not what it was supposed to do. And so, and so it's a little tough to judge civil service against the question of efficiency. So we're, in this debate, as I see it, we're trying to strike a balance between, we, the city has this asset, how can it, on the one hand, provide service in the best possible way, and on the other hand, how can it serve the city? I mean, I lived in a neighborhood where several families were raised up on DWP employment, so I get how important that it is to the fabric of our communities. At the same time, we want to have one of the best utilities that there are, so it's, you know, it's big. I wanted to add to the chairman's request. He asked a question, he led with a question about the history, about how long has this been in place? If not, when did it get in place and sort of how did we get there? I would love to actually have that, because the person didn't know. And then, are there civil service sort of hybrids? And maybe this is a CLA and CAO, but are there civil service hybrids that have been experimented with in California or the country that we might look at as examples?
Good question. And is it, is it possible to alter the civil service rules for just one entity? Or does that have an effect on the rest of the city family? And again, Sharon and Miguel, you know, if you could be engaged in getting us the information on that. And what role does the Civil Service Commission play where it relates to your hiring?
Okay. So, the Civil Service Commission, they approve our examination requests. They approve any changes that the department requests in terms of the exam requirements, which is basically the part of the examination that determines who gets to sit for the examination, who gets to participate. If we want to add new positions at the Department of Water and Power, the Civil Service Commission ultimately has to approve any allocation requests that we make. And then those requests that are approved, in essence, the city's classification plan, you know, adds these new positions as we go. And they also, as relates to just straight personnel, they review and they adjudicate our employee discipline cases.
Okay. And how do the other utilities, because they all have a union or labor relationship, how do they, I mean, work with all of this? Is it because of MOUs or agreements that they have with the actual labor entities? Is that how they do their hiring or what have you? What's different with the way they operate in comparison to us?
Well, the majority of the utilities that we've looked at don't have a civil service environment for which they have to survive in, okay? Yes, they have MOUs with the respective labor organizations, but they have different hiring models. Their discipline is handled more through the grievance and arbitration process than going through a civil service commission process. Their classification issues are not through the civil service commission either, so that the utilities are able to go and add and look at new positions that they're going to need based on whatever the entity needs going forward, or if there's a change and shift in what the utility is going to focus their energies on going forward, they have the ability just to go ahead and create those on their own positions for that. So, I mean, that's the major distinction between how we, the Department of Water and Power, compare to those other utilities.
Okay. One other thing I just want to say, and again, Miguel and Sharon, I'm going to ask that the, we instruct the CAO, CLA, with the assistance of the city attorney's office, DWP and the Personnel Department, to report back on options based on all of the components of Mr. Fuentes's motion. There's a list of what the mayor refers to as his principles. There was an article in the Daily News that had suggestions from our controller, Mr. Galperin, and if you would take that and combine that with the requests that have been made of you from this committee. You know, we want to hear the options on governance over city hall oversight, the revenue transfer, staffing, the role of the ratepayer advocate. And, you know, so I think it's time for you guys to really give us a big, big research paper.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Weezar.
And thank you. I think, you know, overall, first, I want to thank Councilmember Fuentes for sparking this discussion, much needed. And if we look at the issues or perceived issues at DWP and the governance for proprietary departments within the city, a comparison of what are one existing full-time commissioner department and how that works, I'd like to see that as well, which is Public Works. So if the request here in this proposal is to make our DWP commissioners full-time, we already have one full-time commission, which is Public Works. How's that working? Do they have the full staff, and are they staffed up correctly? Are we getting the types of results and outcomes and outputs because we have a full-time commission versus part-time at the other proprietary departments? And how are they staffed up versus how we propose to staff up here? So I think we already have some history about what a full-time commission may look like and what the needs are for those commissioners. But Michelle, I think I was, somebody mentioned that how the current police commission, and I think one other was mentioned that has additional staff. It's the police commission and which one else? The port? Okay. So even our existing one type, full-time commission, which is Public Works, does not have additional staff?
Public Works has an executive board secretary that provides additional staff support. They also have administrative staff as well within the board. I don't have the actual numbers, but...
But it'd be great to look at that type of information as well, comparison to that department and the other proprietary department as well, as we move forward. But I think this is a great conversation to have, but we should, as we move forward, as we've identified perceived issues or problems, if the proposals that we're proposing to fix that really match up with that. And one of those areas that stand out for me is whether just simply throwing out the civil service is matching up to the concerns we have that. If we could fix that within the context of our civil service system, that is something that I'm keenly looking into. Thank you.
And, you know, Mr. Weezar brings up a good point where it relates to the makeup of the commission. So it is time for us to get options, full-time, part-time, seven members, five members. Who appoints them? You know, what gives, how do we give them more independence? Is it to do something similar to what we do with the police commission and the hiring of the chief, where the, because in my view, I see a combined role where the commission might make recommendations, you know, they do interviews, make recommendations to the mayor, or, you know, something to that effect. Do you point, appoint commissioners similar to, I don't know, if it's ethics commissioners, where, okay, Sharon, you're appointed, you have a four-year term, and in order for us to remove you, you have to, you know, run over a small dog in the sidewalk or something like that? So we, we want to see, you know, how can we give more power? Or how can we, what are the options? And then let us kind of factor in what works best for us. And I still want to see more detail where it relates to some kind of support staff team that would make them operate more efficiently. And again, there's going to be so many questions, and that's why the quicker we get data from you, then we will be able to share it with others so that we can get a, so we can have a real conversation in the city. Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to add a touch of complexity to that question, so I know that the general workforce, we're comparing civil service to essentially what corporations have and drawing conclusions about where it works and where it doesn't. I would love to get information about the leadership and get the same comparison. So Edison International has a board. What staff does their board have? What are the terms of their service, all like that? Since we're, since we're making comparisons, I'd love to get that comparison as well.
Okay. Is there, do you guys want to say something as a close? Does Ms. So, Miguel, Mr. Fuentes? So, members, I have nothing else at this point. And, you know, I don't know if you guys have another statement or question or two. Did we, is there anything else? Okay. So again, we appreciate your participation. We appreciate the public coming out. Again, we intend on having several hearings at all, like I said, all times of day, the weekend, the evenings, because we're going to try to get as much data as we can so that we can make the best decision that we can, with our goal still being to have a package to present before the council. By one way or another, we'll meet that deadline, and that's why it's so important to us that you guys cooperate and move in a timely fashion. So with that said, I, Mr. Clerk, there's no further business than this committee is adjourned. Thank, again, thank you all.